For the honor of doing that work in your name, and we thank you for loving us. That no matter where life finds us today, you love each one of us unconditionally. Tonight, we pray for each city official and in particular for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid any conflicting interests and issues present here tonight. Grant them a sense of welfare and true needs of the people of Kenner, both those gathered here and those that cannot be present. Grant them confidence in what is good, just, and right. And grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. For you've told us what is good and what you require of us: to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you, our God. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight, and we ask that your will would be done here on earth as it is in heaven. And finally, continually draw each one of us closer to you, teaching us to be more and more like your Son, Jesus Christ, living in your creative goodness for the sake of others through the power of your Spirit. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Greg Teff to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Teff.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Is there any resolutions, motions, or any other items from the floor this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, Approval of Minutes, the regular council meeting of January 24th, 2020. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications; we have none. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2198-20, Celebration Hispana de Kenner Incorporated, to hold a public gathering on March 28th and 29th, 2020, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., for the purpose of a 10th Kenner Hispanic Fest at the rear of the Ponch train center at 4545 Williams Boulevard. Item 3B is application number 2203-20, Pilgrim Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on March 28th through 2020, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., for the purpose of a car show at the Pilgrim Baptist Church, 2114 Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. Item 3C is application number 2204-20, Audubon Elementary School, to hold a public gathering on March 6th, 2020, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., for the purpose of a school fund run at Audubon Elementary School, 200 West Loyola Drive. Item 3D is application number 2207-20, Washington Elementary, to hold a public gathering on February 20th, 2020, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., for the purpose of a Mardi Gras parade at Washington Elementary, 606 Clay Street. Item 3E is application number 2208-20, Cindy Catalano, to hold a public gathering on February 8th, 2020, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., for the purpose of a block party at 56 Lukiah Drive. Item 4 is correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Zion.
Thank you, Council President. I want to first report on our sales tax. Sales tax continues to rise every time I give you all a report. And I'm happy to say once again, we have the sales tax revenues from January, which actually reflect December. We are up 4% over this past December, over the past December before that. That shows what we're doing in the city of Kenner. When you look at that overall, for the current fiscal year, we're up 6.3% from this time last year. Whatever we're doing, and I can tell you, we're all doing the right thing, from each and every council person, to the chief of police, the fire chief, the departments, making everyone happy, economic development, that's drawing people in. We just recently, this week, we had a bunch of ribbon cuttings. And sometimes some people say, "Yeah, well, they're just small ribbon cuttings," and sometimes we lose some. But we did 114 ribbon cuttings since this administration took place, and that's almost the last two years of a lot of these new council members, including some former council members. So it shows, over the last three years, with you all and council members that are still here, such as Segura, Wilmot, and Carroll, we're doing the right thing. Just the rest of this month, we have three more booked to do some ribbon cuttings with, and we also have five more that are in planning. It shows what we're doing and how we continue to do that throughout the city of Kenner. So I am 100% in support of what this council has done, along with this administration, and how we're doing it throughout the city. Again, police protection, fire protection, code enforcement, Economic Development Department, Economic Development Board, working with this administration, you all working with us, and us working with you. It shows a difference throughout the city of Kenner, and I'm very, very happy to report on those things. So don't be discouraged by anyone who may say, "Y'all not doing enough." I think we're doing a lot, and I think we need to continue, and we probably need to do more. Most of the ribbon cuttings we have throughout the city, you get a lot of good feedback and a lot of good rapport on it. So these businesses are happy. If you have not been to Rivertown lately, and I know you all have, but I'm talking to the public, if you've not been to Rivertown, and Councilman Carroll backed me up on this, and I know the rest of you all too, but it is changing. Rivertown is definitely changing. And I got to give a lot of credit to, obviously, the district office, my office, but also Candace Watkins with her group, Kelly Han and Heidi Gloriosa, for what they're doing. And look, they just got $5,000 for a major facility, the Planetarium, I don't know if you saw it, Councilman Carroll, from the Kenner Business Association. Sure, that shows where we're going, and we're attracting business associations that are very supportive. With that said, I'm going to go into code enforcement, because code enforcement does play a vital role in this. Just past week, well, past two weeks, from January 30th until February 4th, we have done two more code sweeps. James Mohammed does a fantastic job with leading that code enforcement department with all the men and ladies, along with Molly McGinnis in there, for what they do. We were in District 4 on February the 4th, just this week, 600 blocks to 900 blocks of Vuray, a problem area. Councilman Brannigan, you know that, that it's continued to be a problem area since way before you. But code enforcement does what they can. Only 20 violations were found. I know I'm saying only, but usually it's a lot higher than that. Warning violations were 16. So something's working there. January 30th, before that, we were in the 3,200 blocks, 3,400 blocks, with the help of Councilman Segura's office in District 2 of California, Colorado, and Delaware. It's a little higher than expected. We obviously have to do a better job there. 99 violations, it's kind of high. Warning violations, 40, high, and court summons, one. We have a lot more work to do in some areas, but the code enforcement department continues to do that, and I think people look at that and see that the code enforcement department's doing a very good job. I tell all the residents all the time, if you have any code violation, don't be scared to report it. Your name will be kept anonymous, and we will take care of the situation as quickly as possible. With that, Council President, unless y'all have any questions on where we're going, my report for a change is very short. Thank you.
I just want to add that, when we did the ribbon cutting at Arby's, they was very happy to have that. So District 4 residents, visit Arby's on West Sussplnade. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just add to the comments that the mayor said, as it relates to Rivertown. Obviously, this is home for me and many of my family members and friends, and to be able to see the work that's being done in Rivertown, and not so much the work, the work should come automatically by the different departments, it's their job, it's what they get paid for. But it is taking the position that this is a part of the city, the historical part that we should be proud of, and we should be proud of the way that it will look in advance for other visitors to come from fall to summer. So, you know, things are getting better there, we appreciate that. You know, there are some other things we got to address, but in time, but we're at least, you know, looking at it. So I want to thank everybody for that. Particularly, I'd like to thank the General Service Department, that was, I guess it was put together during this administration, during this time, to reallocate resources, to reallocate labor, people, to reorganize the organization, to address it in a more functional manner. And I think with that, with the director, the assistant director, and all the men and women that work within there, they have taken it upon themselves as a sense of pride to ensure that the Rivertown area is something that they can, whenever they decide to retire, when people look at it, they take pride in it. So I want to thank them, their continued effort to ensure that this part of Kenner, the historic part of Kenner, is something that we all can be proud of. So thank you, guys, very much, and obviously thank the code department director, Mohammed, and all that he do for the entire city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. That will conclude the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, on the consent agenda. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 9, Public Hearings for Final Passage. Item 9A is summary ordinance number 12,662, and a First Amendment to the General Bond Ordinance described herein, which authorizes the issuance from time to time of sales tax bonds of the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to discuss this? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 9B is summary ordinance number 12,663, a second supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $9,500,000 of taxable sales tax bonds, Series 2020, of the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of a general bond ordinance prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, providing for the sale of said bonds to Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Councilman Hayes.
We're now in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address? We're in a public hearing. Seeing none? Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to close your hearing. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes, 7-0. Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, for approval.
But he was... Councilmember Hayes, you have the floor.
Tom, you want to go through these projects, make up the non that happened?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I can do that. The first one is lift station improvements at the station that's located at 24th and Delaware. We're adding screening over there and a larger generator so that we can run all the pumps. Next one is 39th and Power. We're upgrading those pumps to provide additional capacity. Next one is additional funding for the force main that connects the chateau transfer station to the treatment plant. The next one is fuel storage and distribution system, which will complement the generator project that was recently completed. And the last one is a force main replacement project for the John Hopkins Lift Station.
Mr. Webber, do you have any idea of how great you're going to be with taxable bonds?
Yes, sir. The rate is going to be .95%.
.95% on taxable bonds. Thank you so much. Good job.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 10 is opening of biz; we have none. Item 11 is classification of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is summary ordinance number 12,652, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the city of Kenner, Louisiana, on March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the city of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending every zoning lots Y2, Y1, Z70, 69, 68, 67, 66, and B1 Square 99, Veteran Heights subdivisions from C1 Neighborhood Commercial and R2 to Family Residential, to C2 General Commercial, and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning director of the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner, Louisiana.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We have a presentation by Wendell Dufour.
Thank you, Council President. The applicant in this case is Weber Consulting, 2131 Beenville Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70112. The property owner is Mr. Sammy Boomeichel, 1705 Mylan Street, New Orleans, Louisiana. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of these properties to C2, to potentially build a hotel along Veterans Boulevard. They conducted an early neighborhood meeting on Thursday, October 10th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Susan Park Gym. Two people attended, not including the applicant, and both expressed support for the rezoning. Lots Z, Y1, and Y2 front Veterans Memorial Boulevard, and lots 66 through 70 and B1 front Huntsville Street. Property is generally bounded by Veterans Memorial Boulevard to the north, Huntsville to the east, 27th Street to the south, and Jasper Street to the west. These lots are currently undeveloped. The lots to the west of the property, abutting to the west, are zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial and R2 to Family Residential, and are developed as appropriate uses. The lots abutting the property to the east are also zoned C1 and R2, and are also developed as appropriate uses. Susan Park subdivision, which is zoned RR1 Single Family, is located to the north across Veterans, and lots B2 and 14A in Square 99 abut the subject to the south enter zone R2, and developed as residential uses. In 1957, the city of Kenner zoning map designated all of the lots as two-family residential, R2. In 1978, the three lots fronting Veterans were rezoned from R2 to RR3 Multi-Family, while the remaining lots retained their R2 zoning. In 1988, lots Y1, Y2, and Z were rezoned to General Office, and then again, they were rezoned to C1 Neighborhood Commercial as part of the adoption of the Unified Development Code. The development is consistent with the Pattern for Progress Future Land Use Plan. The city identifies the Veterans Corridor is likely to be impacted by the relocation of the airport terminal to the north side of the airport. Veterans is a major corridor linking Williams Boulevard I-10 and Loyola Drive with direct vehicle access to the new airport entrance. Recently, there have been other approved rezonings to C2 along Veterans in response to these changing land use dynamics. The proposed rezoning of these lots is consistent with the overall emerging development along that portion of Veterans Boulevard corridor, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval for this rezoning. That concludes Plane Department's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dufour. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue? I have a motion by Councilmember... Please state your name and full address.
Good evening. Pastor Jackie Brown Cochranham, 2610 Decatur Street, Apartment 8. My question is, on the matter that Mr. Dufour just mentioned, can you tell me when the announcements were sent out to the public about this meeting? Because I never received one, and I'm in Veteran Heights.
The applicant is... So as part of our rezoning process, the applicant is required to conduct an early neighborhood notice meeting with all of the property owners within 250 feet of the subject properties. I believe they did that. The Plane Department is legally required to also send certified letters to all the property owners within 250 feet of the subject properties prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and we did that as well. So that was...
And the meeting was held on the 10th of October, you say, of 2019?
Their early neighborhood meeting was held on October 10th. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have record of when the announcements were sent out?
I have...
They came from the Plane and Department?
No, ma'am.
From the applicant?
The Plane Department sends out certified letters. We have all of those receipts for every case that we have. Those go out about 10 days prior to the case being heard at the Planning Commission. The applicant is not required to send out certified mailings, they're required to send a letter to the property owners within 250 feet, inviting them to an early neighborhood meeting. In this case, the meeting was held at Susan Park Gym, and where they discussed the reasons why they were requesting the rezoning, and why their plans were, which I believe were to... They're planning on building a hotel.
Okay, yeah, I do, too. Okay, so, any other questions that I might have I can communicate with you?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right, because I think I'm going to have some questions after this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name and your full address.
Good evening. Ron Lasel with Weber Consulting, 2131 Beenville Street. Just to answer that question, those letters were mailed out early in October, and also, I believe Councilmember Carroll sent notice, Ms. Kelly Harper with Councilman Carroll sent out the notices to the appropriate neighborhood groups as well. And there were, again, two neighbors that showed up, and both in support of it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to address the developer, the engineer, and also for Mr. Wendell and Pastor Brown, that yes, I participated along with my office, along with the code department in this process. Now, a lot of people don't realize that there is a boundary to send this information out. Not only was that done, I personally walked the street on that, met the developer out there, met this Wendell out there, to walk the street, to talk to some people about what was coming up, to ensure everybody was informed. You know, this is part of this area that I have said many times before, and we all are in the process of living it and seeing it grow, of the developments from different hotels and different things that will be built along the corridor on Veterans Highway. Right now, I would say the majority of it is businesses that affront Veterans Highway. Most of it, not all of it, most of it, I believe, and I believe in the future that it will have that look, and it is important that we play a part in that to ensure that it's always a good... It's always challenging to ensure that the mix for development for businesses along with the neighborhood is intact, and it is a... You know, it's a balancing act to do that. I believe most of the properties that will abut Veterans Highway will be commercial in the future of 10, 15, 20 years from now, and then most of the residency from around 27th and back will be residencies. But we have to be, you know, consistent and ensure that the people, the residents that live, live there, or, you know, it's conducive to their living, the traffic, all of those concerns we got to deal with. So for this particular project and for projects coming up, we will send out the required letters that are required so many feet, and depending on the project, we may extend it even more. So that's the responsibility of code and myself, and we look forward to ensuring that that takes place for the community to know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilman Hayes?
Sir, you got away from the mic. I was trying to ask a question. I had my light on. Is it Mr. Lazar? Is it...
Lazar.
Can you tell me, is this part of the opportunity zone? Does it extend on the other side of Veterans? I know Susan Park is part of it.
I believe so, but I'm not 100% sure. I believe so.
Wendell, do you?
I believe it's between the airport, and if it goes to Susan Park, it wouldn't... This is on the south side of Veterans. So it is between Veterans and the airport, so it should be included.
Well, we'll see a lot of additional development in this area, if it is part of the opportunity zone, that's for sure.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. We have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage; we have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 2831 Fayette Street in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 1915 Kansas Avenue in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13C is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 410 Taylor Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13D is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 3015 Akron Street in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13E is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 2508 Roosevelt Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13F is a resolution exercising the second one-year renewal of the July 6, 2015 audit contract with DuPont, Shear, Ratman, Hogan, and Mayer, LLP.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 13G is a resolution requesting the Jefferson delegation to support House Bill Reference Identification Number HLS 20RS-209 of the 2020 Regular Session of the Louisiana Legislature. Identification Number HLS 20RS-209 of the 2020 Regular Session of the Louisiana Legislature.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brennan. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,665, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid received from Total Electronics Inc. to furnish and install cameras at Kenner City Park in accordance with letter bid number 19-1591 and an amount not to exceed $27,933.61 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,666, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Victory Home Center to purchase a house trailer in accordance with seal bid number 19-6525 and an amount not to exceed $36,995 for the Kenner Fire Department.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,667, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the existing apparatus store at Fire Station 379 and an amount not to exceed $5,440 by minor for the Kenner Fire Department.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Brennan. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,668, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fleming Construction Company, LLC, to provide concrete, street maintenance, and small jobs on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 19-6518 and an amount not to exceed $1,400,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Branigan. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 15E is a resolution accepting as complete the agreement with Planet Recess Incorporated dated November 12, 2019 regarding the furnish and install new playground at Veterans Park for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Brennan. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 15F is a resolution approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with W.J. Blusher Company, LLC, dated July 19, 2018, to provide professional services, labor only, for fixtures, lamps, and wiring for all city properties on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 18-6424, which increases the not-to-exceed amount by $100,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Wilmot. I will have to abstain from this vote.
Council members, please vote. Motion passes, 6-0. Councilmember Branigan abstaining. Item 15G is a resolution approving change order number 1, final to the construction agreement with BLD Services, LLC, dated June 19, 2019, for the Kenner Hansen City Sewer Lift Station improvements for LS 4103 Firehouse Road Sewer Force Main Replacement Project, increasing the contract amount by $60,598 and accepting the project as complete by the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes, 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,337, adopted October 5, 2017, to delete the definition of short-term rental from Section 1. Item 16B is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the City of Kenner on March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, more particularly amending and rezoning Lot 24A, Square 223, Briarwood Subdivision from R3, 3 and 4 Family Residential to C1 Commercial Neighborhood Commercial, and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning director of the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive proposal from Amco Fence Company to remove and replace two-door King 9150 slide gate operators to existing slide gate equipment and an amount not to exceed $7,300 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16D is an ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase, installation, and startup of one Raytherm commercial boiler in the amount of $24,594 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Sims, Inc., for a two-year contract for cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 19-6523 and an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from W.J. Blusher Company, LLC, to provide professional services, labor only, for fixtures, lamps, and wiring on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number 19-6521 and an amount not to exceed $200,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16G is an ordinance amending the Kenner Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Section 15-21 of the Kenner Code of Ordinances, to establish stop signs on 42nd Street. Item 17, these reports from the council and our special committees?
Yes, I, I've been getting calls about lights on Chateau Boulevard. The first three light poles, I think, were out. There's a feeder problem that is being addressed, so just want to let you know that they're working on getting those lights put back on. And we also had an issue from Chateau Latour, three poles, and there's a feeder issue there. So they're working on that. We're working on getting those lights turned back on.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. My apologies. I just would like to give some kudos. I'd like to thank Tom Schreiner and his department for helping with a lot of improvements and some issues that we've been trying to get finished, and those have been pushed along. I'd also like to thank the administration and Councilwoman McKenney. We've been working on setting another meeting with the Archbishop and the Archdiocese of New Orleans regarding the old St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton School Site. We're hoping to have a little more information and be able to make some announcements on that in the very near future. I'd also like to thank the administration and Councilwoman McKenney and Chad Pittfield, who is helping us work on improvements at Kenner City Park and some long overdue improvements that went with playground. So thank you all.
I have one other thing. The track at Musperdolino is in the middle of being completed, so that should be open, I would think, in next month. Director Pittfield? Paramo. Okay. Councilman Segura?
Yes, just to follow up with my other councilman on recreation, I'd like to somewhat announce that the Highway Park totlot is back in service. We have completed the installation of the totlot and have opened it up for use. We still have more work to do in that piece of ground that you'll see some barricades separating the totlot from the rest of the field. So we have some more covered picnic bench area to put in, as well as some adult exercise equipment that will be going in. So we hope to get that moving and by the springtime have it ready to go completely. But for the parents and kids in the Highway Park particular area, you are, it is open for you to go use. The Veterans Park, as you saw tonight, we accepted as complete the totlot equipment in Veterans Park, so it has now been replaced and open for use. And we do have some other equipment going in that park also, but I will get to that announcement later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Segura.
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Greg Teft? Please state your name and complete address.
My name is Greg Teft, live at 3720 West Laola Drive. I just have really two questions. One question is, with the parade coming, has there been any provisions for parking along the route or what, where people will be parking that will be attending the parade? And the other thing I want to get an update on is, are we on target or were we at it with the new fire station? And that's all I have. I'd just like...
Council Chairman?
Yes.
For the first question, we'll call up Chad Pittfield, and we'll call up Chief Morris for the second question.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn.
Thank you, Mr. Teft.
So for the parade itself, obviously, the route needs to be clear. The roadways will be clear. There'll be no parking on side of the roadways. That includes on Vintage Drive as well, where they generally do park on that side. So, yeah, the actual route of the parade, which will follow the flow of traffic from the beginning all the way until we reach the intersection of Chateau and Joe Yenny, that is the first time we will go against the normal flow of traffic. So if anybody has questions on what side of the street, that should answer that for them. But yes, no parking whatsoever along the parade route. That entire lane of travel must be free from vehicles. What's that? Parade's going to start at 6 o'clock, so we're going to be placing some temporary no-parking signs along that vintage location to let them know. I don't know the time offhand, but I want to say maybe around, starting at noon. Noon? It's noon that day.
Our Chief?
Let me add, Council Chairman, can I add something to the parade route?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. We spent the last Saturday, which you may have seen on Facebook, putting out a door hanger that any neighborhood that is affected on the parade route will spend this Saturday morning also doing the same thing. 100% behind the idea that Lee Russell and Chad Pittfield had to do this, working with Bob Ross to get this public information out to the doors. We've had a lot of good reception. I'm not worried about the negative reception. That's just about, you know, why are you doing this? We're doing it to any affected neighborhood. I know Councilwoman McKenney's going to help us this weekend on behalf of the Crew of ISIS, because the Crew of ISIS is very appreciative that we did the door hanger. It's going on to anybody who's affected on the parade route, even the subdivisions that are affected. So if you don't get one in Woodlake and District 1 or District 2, it's because you're not on the parade route. So any neighborhood, any home that is affected by that is getting it. And a little bit further, Bob Ross, our public information officer, has gone to the majority of businesses on the parade route itself, any business that's affected. Now he's spending the next week or so going to the opposite side of the parade route just to let those businesses know, because I think what Mr. Teft was asking, you know, are these businesses, are they going to allow parking? That's going to be up to the businesses. That's going to see what the businesses do to let those people park there. But we're letting all these businesses know, and I can say from Bob Ross telling me this and from myself, along with my administration, knocking some, not knocking some doors, but putting on doors and running into residents this past weekend, everybody's happy. We have had no negative response from the real residents. Those residents out there that appreciate progress in the City of Kenner have been really, really happy with this parade. So, look, if anybody wants to join us this weekend, we're welcome to take your, your help and go out there, but it is a good public service. I know Councilman Brennan is joining me, and also Councilman Hayes is joining me for some areas that are affected in their, in their areas. But it's a good public service announcement, and I know Councilman Branigan, you and I talked about it, to get that word out. So if you have any questions, contact my office, contact the information on the parade door hanger, or Chad, or Lee, or Bob Ross. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn.
I'm here to address the fire station. We're in the process of, we just received approval from the council to purchase the temporary housing for the station. We're trying to get that delivered as soon as possible. We have been putting in the storage containers and stuff for the guys, so as soon as we can get the temporary station in place and all the services connected to it, the electricity and water and sewer, as well as the communication systems installed, we will be able to place a company and service at the, as a temporary site until the permanent structure is built. That's that answer.
When do you think it'll be ready?
The temporary station? Hopefully, we could get it in within the next two weeks. We're pushing pretty hard to get, get everything accomplished, to have a company in place in that, in that location.
You're going to have a facility cut-in and all that?
I would like to, that's up to the mayor. For the red firehouse? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Al Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Soil Drive, 5th District, 48 years. First, I want to extend my prayers to the family of a young lady and an unborn baby that lost their life in that horrific accident on our streets, on West Espinada, on the streets of Kennesaw. Still being investigated, possibly road rage was involved. We don't know. Second, I got some comments and some questions pertaining to the mayor's report on taxes, on sales taxes. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing with Target, just expired. Is that a driver in any kind of way of our sales taxes, of the increase in our sales taxes?
Al, you want to finish, or you finished?
No, 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 I'm not going to use my time unless they can freeze it. If they can't freeze it, no, I'm going to keep on talking.
Keep talking.
Okay. Another thing I want to, I want to talk about, a couple of meetings ago, I talked about getting an inspection done on that natural gas line running parallel to the bridge across Canal Number 7, right there by my house on the corner. I'd like to get an update on that, see what's been done on that. I haven't seen inspection on that gas line in, in a while now. That's why, you know, that's why I requested it, okay? To bring the people in the 5th District a little up to date in the council, the councilman probably already knows, I don't know, nothing was mentioned about it. The Jefferson Parish Drainage Department has been out on Canal Number 7 in front of my house on the last two days, the last two days, and they installing two new drainage coves. They pulled up two of them that was in pretty bad shape. So I just want to pass that on to y'all, okay? Next thing I want to talk about is the Kenner Housing Authority. I would like to see a representative from the city. I'm requesting this. I know you don't have to, but I'm going to request it anyway. I'd like to see a representative from the city of Kenner start attending those meetings. Years ago, we used to have a young lady from the legal department that used to come to them and take notes on what was going on over there. And being we got this big multi-million dollar project coming up with the Glenwood Apartments, where the city have to get, has to get involved, I think it would be a good idea to have a representative down there. Anybody got any comments, any questions? I'll go ahead and yield the 18 seconds. Thank you.
Mr. Morella, the actual, the TIF actually expired in March...
Excuse me a second. Can you talk up a little bit, man? You're coming in weak.
The Target TIF expired in March of last year.
Okay. Now, the second part of my question, is that a driver in any kind of way of the sales tax increases in the city of Kenner by that TIF expiring?
It's definitely a positive. Right, it's definitely positive in our, in our favor, yes.
Yeah, I'm asking though, is it, is it a driver? Does it, does it cause the sales taxes to increase by the TIF expiring?
It will help increase.
So it is connected to it? That's all I want to know.
I'll, I'll put it like this. We don't want to lose Target.
Got you, Mayor Zahn. Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Thank you.
Tracy M. Jackson?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Mitchell Jackson. My address is 22 Napa Lane, Kennesaw, Louisiana. And my concern is where my husband and I, we reside, there's a concern about the gates that are being put up. There's one gate, it's a safety issue. On one side of Napa Lane, there is an iron gate that's locked 24/7. And then in the back where we park now, there is a gate that has been installed, and that gate is going to be locked. So it's just a safety issue. If a car or something breaks down, if an ambulance has to come through, they can't because it's so small, and there will only be one entrance and one exit for us to go to and from. So we just concerned, it's definitely... definitely a safety issue for everyone in the community. And other people said they were coming tonight, but they're not here. But my husband and I, we are here, and we just concerned. It's a safety issue.
Tracy, that development is in my district, and my mother-in-law lives at two Napa Lane, and she drives a Hyundai and says she can't get out the gate. So, I'm going to look into that. We need to find out if that is a city issue or a developer issue. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's a developer issue, and we're going to have to, I'll sit down with him.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
If you, do you have my contact information?
I don't.
Okay, I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Council Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
It's a hundred percent the developer, and Mr. Muhammad would like to address that.
Okay. James?
We've been working with that developer for the last five years since he took over the project after it went to funk at one point in time. The developer, his name's Terry. Become very good, good open line of communication with him. He has an understanding that he's going to, before that last building is done, he's going to make sure those gates are working properly. We can't control if they put automatic gates there, because it's a sealed-off development. And he's actually moving into that development. So, he's going to be a part of that community. He's not just a developer that's moving in there and moving out, going to go live somewhere else. He's definitely going to be a part of that community. So, and we've had some issues with some landscaping there. The trees keep dying. We're on him, so we're working with him.
Okay, well, if you could, just check with him and see, because the width of the gates, she drives a Hyundai and can't get, can barely get out. So, we need to see, see, I don't think it's our responsibility, but, you know, we will, you know, we just have...
Councilman Branigan, just like I always offer you, I'll meet you out there. I'll bring my big Ford truck, and we'll work this out. We'll take a ride together.
Okay.
Promise him.
That'll work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, James. Pass to Cochran?
Good evening again. Pastor Jackie Brown Cochran, twenty-six ten Decatur Street Apartment Eight. I would like to say thank you to Councilman Carroll, Councilman at large Wilmore, McKinley, Mr. James Muhammad, to Tamisha Shaw, who's the Director of Community Development, and to Ms. Jill Johnson, who's with Jefferson Parish District Three over Community Development. Again, thank you for accepting our invitation at Veteran Heights Subdivision Neighborhood Association, and for imparting your wisdom and your support to help us to do what we need to do for the community. I would also like to say, we do anticipate your response, Mayor Zahn, as well as an invitation in the future to Fire Chief Terrance Morris, to Police Chief Mike Glazer, Mr. Chad Pittfield. We will be inviting you to our monthly meetings. Just a matter of what month we can do it and what month and time you might be available. But we have our meetings first Tuesday of the month at six thirty. So, thank you so much for your support, and God bless.
Thank you, Pastor. Mike Jackson? Okay. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Pastor, I just want to say, you know, thank you guys for inviting us to the meeting. We enjoyed, listened to the conversation and listened to some of the comments and concerns from the people who live in the area. And along what I said earlier about the area, the corridor advancing and different things being built, it's going to be imperative that the people who live there, like the group that has gotten started, to ensure that we are held accountable. The contractors are held accountable. Everyone is held accountable, and I think it starts with the civic organizations like groups like that. And as people who live in the area and who have lived there for a long time, not only in the Veteran Heights, but also Susan Park in Lincoln Manor, see that there is an interest. People want to make sure that things are done properly, safely, and correctly. So, this organization, I pray that it grows legs and to be able to include more people in the area. And we look forward to coming to future meetings and to ensure that we are doing our job as it relates to the community. So, thank you again for inviting us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. David Weathersby?
David Weathersby hasn't arrived yet. He running late, and I think I may be next.
Oscar Cade?
Oscar Cade, fifteen oh seven Gordon Street, Kenner, Louisiana, zip seven hundred and sixty-five. Briefly, to Mr. Mike Segura. Mr. Carroll, will you pass that to Mike for me? Thank you, Mike, for helping us out with our Say No to Drug group and helping, keeping the kids focused on the behalf of the police department. We appreciate that. There are several other people. Judge Johnson, Cedric Floyd, Mr. Weathersby, James Tucker, and all these people we like to thank. Appreciate what all you all done. I want to say this. I don't have no animosity against nobody here. I love everybody in this audience, simply because I'm a Christian, so I'm supposed to love. I'm here with a concern that bothers me is that all the other districts in Kenner Recreation have no problems. District One is the only one being complaining with problems. You all are councilmen, it's five of you. Put the problem on the table, and the five of you are working out where we all can be helpful. Because that little district where you don't help these kids get a vessel to make it in life, is going to turn around and haunt your kids in life because they don't have. Once upon a time in Kenner, we had the Butcher Dewey Award. My son won two of them. We traveled, we united. Do what you all can do to come together, to see to it that all districts and recreation will come up together. That's that. Mr. Muhammad, sir, I appreciate you and do, and love everything that you do in the city of Kenner. We had a talk early on what I was talking about, but let me clarify the point that I wanted to make. The elderly people that's on these fixed incomes, when you see a tree in their yard that's about to fall on their house, they can't, they're on a fixed income. They can't pay three thousand to get that cut down. What I wanted to talk to you about is see if we can send code help before we send code enforcement. That's all, Mr. Muhammad. There are a lot of nonprofit groups out there that would be willing to put monies together to help take care of these old people problems that can't afford it. That's the things that I want to point out to you. And Mr. Wilmore, thank you so much for being there on the Martin Luther King Day. Three years I've been noticing. Mr. Mayor, next year, we have Martin Luther King Day coming up. Sir, if you can just pass by and say how you're doing and leave. Show appreciation. You call it, how you say it, professional courtesy. And no, no offense, and please don't think that I'm angry with anybody, because I frowned because they butchered the nerves up in my head, a young lady that was a physician assistant, not a doctor. And I don't want to call her name, because we still working on that. Mike, I love you. Thank you. Chief Glazer, next time, maybe I can get you out there to help us out some with these kids. God bless, and you'll have a good evening.
Thank you.
Council Chairman?
Mayor Zahn?
Just to address the issue with code enforcement going on private property. Yeah, we can't spend taxpayer money on private property, but maybe there's something we could do with a church group in that neighborhood and address that. As for the Martin Luther King Day Parade, I'm usually out of town that weekend for some personal reasons. So, if Mr. Cade wants to talk to me about that later on, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. Did Mr. Weathersby get here? I can... Can you do that?
No, sir, you cannot. He's on the next meeting.
Next, well, Mr. Weathersby is a part of our organization that we put together, and Mr. Sensenow, we are working with District One and all the Recreation, so it's the three of us working together to draw the kids together. That's all Mr. Weathersby wanted to say.
Okay.
You can certainly come to the next meeting and speak.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.